Welcome everybody to the Thursday, August 27th Business Meeting of the Putnam Valley Central School District Board of Education. We had just exited a business, I'm sorry, an executive session and we go straight into public hearing on comments to our district-wide safety emergency management plan. And we have no comments or questions from the community and we will expect to be adopting this this evening. And we will be moving straight on to a, excuse me? Sure, you can do that. Please join me in saluting our flag with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving on to a resolution to approve the minutes for the board of education meetings of July 2nd, 2020, and August 11th, 2020.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have reports, our first report is from Jill Figarella.
I'm going to talk about a couple of topics this week that are recent events. So state aid being the first one. In recent events, the Division of Budget and the State Education Department have put out over the summer months some of their payments to us, but they are reduced by the 20% threat that we received in state aid reduction. So we don't know at this point if this will be a definite cut or if it's just an aid and the, you know, a delay in the aid. So until further notice, we just know that the money that we would normally see coming in at this point is not. And until we get further notification on on that, we won't know. So advocacy groups are trying to make our state leaders understand that a flat 20% cut for school districts really, if they don't base it on wealth and they don't base it on student need, that it's not going to really be a fair distribution of of the reduction. So, you know, they're they're trying to stress that a call to action letter should be put out there by districts. I'm going to recommend, you know, that we send a call to action letter. And if you want, I'd like to read it to everybody what they're going to put out there. It's a little lengthy, it's going to take a minute, but I think it's a good letter. So in any given year, school districts ensure they meet not only the academic needs of their students, they address students' social, emotional health, and nutritional needs as well. These needs have continued to expand since we reached out to you in April. We thank you for your previous efforts, but need you to know that the struggle of school districts only continues. As an educational leader in my community, I am writing at this time to encourage you to support significant additional funding for K-12 public education in the next stimulus package. The New York State Comptroller has reported that our June tax receipts are down 17.3% since last year, and the governor has said we face a $30 billion deficit over the next two years. Without the assistance of federal aid, the governor has threatened to cut school aid by 20%. This would amount to more than $5 billion statewide, and the cost of nearly every aspect of running a district has increased due to COVID. While the world continues to be in a state of unknowns, the state of the start of school is rapidly approaching, and each school district knows best what plans need to be made. The New York State School Boards Association represents 675 local school boards and boards of Cooperative Educational Services, or BOSIs. Each of them has their own issues, needs, and reopening plans. We ask that you understand the need for flexibility in how this funding is implemented in each district and allow them to create a reopening plan that they believe will work best for their students by directly distributing funding to the districts. Much has been learned since in-person learning came to an abrupt halt in late March, and it has allowed districts to better assess needs for the coming year. Each of those needs has a price. Part of that assessment made it clear that there is a deep technological divide across the state. There cannot be true equity in our education system when certain students are forced to bring their Chromebooks to parking lots to do a day's worth of homework in the car while other students sit behind desks in their rooms free of distraction. A $5 billion increase to the federal E-Rate program would secure funding to provide schools and libraries and the ability to support distance and remote learning, and we ask for the expansion of what products these monies can be used for. Feeding our students and the community continues to not only be a main component of many reopening plans, but also an unforeseen cost we have learned from. We must accept that the previous operation of school cafeteria serving two meals a day to only students that are in the building will not be seen for quite some time. We're requesting an increase to meal reimbursements related to the meal service transportation costs, packaging costs, hazard pay for food service employees, and a loss of revenue from a from an à la carte food item menu to keep our students and community fed. Additionally, NISBA, or New York State School Boards Association recommends suspending the implementation of the United States Department of Agriculture's proposal to revise broad-based categorical eligibility. The implementation of the broad-based categorical eligibility rule will result in decreased access to nutritional foods for certain students and an increasing cost to a number of school districts. Thank you for this time to consider these important issues, et cetera, et cetera. And I'd like to be able to send this to our representatives, so I'm just asking permission to do that, you know, and sign off on that and send them out. I think it's a good message to to our leaders in the state that, you know, it's going to really have a great impact on our aid as well as all the other school districts.
Jill, are you saying just one? Just we'll just send one letter?
They recommend to three different representatives that are in our
No, but I mean, just one from Putnam Valley? Like you don't want each of us to send one or just one from you or?
I think they're just recommending that our districts send one. I certainly, you know, don't oppose to somebody else or someone else who thinks it's a good message of sending one, but we're sending a different message. But those are very good points all made in that in that letter.
The Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association has been has an advocacy meeting Monday evening. They're going to talk about this also, and they may develop another letter, in which case I could get Janine to sign it from the board or since it's mostly school board.
Right, or if we feel that that is more pertinent for our situation, I think a lot, you know, they're
We can send her, yes.
It's similar.
That's fine, okay. All right, I'll let you know.
Okay. So I don't know if anybody has questions. There's really not much to tell about it, except that we are getting, we are seeing the aid cuts as well, and we don't know whether they will be recovered or not.
Now, I guess as a corollary to this, there have been some changes allowed with parts of our reserve.
Correct. I was just talking about that.
Does that play into this? Is that kind of the dovetail? Part of the stories are different?
Well, it's it's, we can talk about that. The allowance, the state is going to allow districts, or they're going to loosen up the restriction on using your reserves towards COVID expenditures that we might incur during this school year, and I don't know if they'll extend it into how many school years ahead, but it's just a borrowing of your own money. So what you would be doing essentially is borrowing reserves and then have to pay it back with interest from your general fund at some point in time. What the payback schedule is really hasn't been determined, but that is a, it is another tool, you know, that we can use to help us get through these times. And, I mean, I don't know what, it's kind of crazy because what else would you do? I mean, at some point, like you you need to use money to provide PPE for students and staff, for cleaning and sanitizing, for all, they're mandated for us to do those things. So you would have no alternative but that at the end of the year to dig down deeper or make cuts to your your program and your staff during the year in order to meet those things. So basically, you'd be borrowing your own money and having to pay it back.
From the first items, anybody on the board have an issue with the letter? I think it's a good idea for us to have.
No, I think it's good. I'm all for it.
And if you want to add a point, one point you could add is it's nice that our representatives up in Albany all took raises, significant raises, and we're the highest paid government with regard to the governor's salary and the assembly's salary up there.
Okay, so the next topic, I wanted to just talk a few minutes about unfortunately something that's coming up, which is tax collection. So our procedures, you're going to see some slight changes for the sake of safety and COVID-19 Health Department guidelines. First, we're not going to, we're not going to be accepting any in-person payments at the district office, which is out of the norm from our regular practice. There'll be no cash payments, obviously, if we're not accepting payments, so that's not going to be an option for anyone. And for convenience, you know, there'll still be the ability to pay online. We've had that, we're encouraging that. We also provide an, you know, an envelope that's addressed, self-addressed, to where it needs to go to. It's included with your tax bill for people to return their payments in the normal fashion that, you know, we would expect them to. Unfortunately, we probably will still have people who are trying to come in to pay. We're trying to address that, but it's not going to be an accepted practice anymore going forward. The surrounding districts are on the same page with all of this. We are not alone. So if you want to pay online, I'll just put out that information, but you can also go to our website. It's pvcsd.org. You click on school tax payments and information. So bills will be going out early next week, and they're being mailed from the Putnam Valley Post Office. You should see them within a few days after. And, you know, I don't know if if there's any other information I can really give you right now. Our tax warrants were adopted last week. Our rate is down from what it was the year before, but also assessed values are up. So your assessed, your tax levy, your taxes are driven by your assessed value, so I can't really predict what your, how you're going to see your tax bill this year, except STAR changes. You may see a credit on your bill for STAR, you may not because of your income levels. So we're sending out, you know, a letter that'll go out in the tax, with the tax bill, giving all kinds of instructions on how to pay and where they can go for STAR information, whether it's basic or enhanced, or just tax relief, credit tax relief based on the fact that we stayed under the tax cap. So there's several different things that people are going to want to know about their school tax payments, and that letter will tell them how to get that information.
Jill, how many pay in cash or how many pay physically to the office?
How many?
Do you have a percentage?
I'm going to say roughly, it's probably just under $100,000 in cash, but I can't tell you how many people that is, you know, it could be 10 houses, it could be 15. But, you know, they come, they come in with cash. It's dangerous. We're no longer doing it because of germs, to be honest with you. That's the real reason. It's a recommendation. Also, I'm going to talk about that when I talk about school lunch, too, that that's going to be an issue. So.
Thank you.
So I am, I'll make school lunch our next topic. So the district is going to be providing meals to all learners, either in-school, hybrid, or fully remote learners. We have to make those meals available for them. For safety, again, safety and health reasons, all meals are going to be prepackaged, whether they're in school, whether they're, you know, picking up a lunch, or everything is going to be prepackaged. There'll be menus going out, so there's a lot to and a lot of details mixed up in the school lunch, because it all depends on what you are, if you're in-school, if you're both, or if you're just remote. Again, there's not going to, at the elementary school, students will be eating in the classroom. The monitors that normally service the classes and walk them down to the hall, to the cafeteria will be going down themselves to pick up packs of, like packaged lunches in a soft pack, let's say, and bringing it back to the classroom and distributing it. They normally take the menu items from the children in the morning when they get in and roster, so that hasn't, that isn't changing. Everything is staying the same. And so that's how, that will continue in the same fashion. So all they're doing is not going to the cafeteria to eat. In the middle school and high school, they're basically doing what they normally do. They'll be, in the middle school, they'll be eating in the new cafeteria, hopefully. And in the high school, they'll be eating a community lunch throughout the building. They will be restricted to one area by choice. So if your child chooses to eat in the library or wherever that is, that's their place to eat, because we cannot have them eating, wandering, and communicating with others while they're eating, and I think outside of the group that they are, like, supposed to be with every day. And I'm anticipating that some of this could change, you know, part of the way through just because we will need to do things that we, that were unanticipated. There'll be no cash accepted for lunches. So if a child comes in to pay for lunch in cash, and I'm going to give you an example, they have $10, the lunch is $2.75, they will not get any change. The money will go on their account. So every student has a number that's associated with them, a lunch account, and so that difference will go into their account rather than, there's not going to be any money handling beyond what them handing it over to the cashier.
And I'm sorry, is, will there be transaction fee based on that? Because I know for my
There's a transaction fee based on using my school box. So those are two different things. You can give your child a check for, say, $50 to put on his account, his or her account, and that can come in with the child. There's no fee for that.
Okay.
When they use my school box and they pay online, there is a service charge associated with that because there's an outside vendor that handles that.
Okay.
But I am encouraging everyone to set up those accounts, either one way or the other, because it just avoids all of the touching of money and and whatnot. So communications will go out via email soon, I'm hoping tomorrow, with instructions on how this is all going to work, with the directions where to log in. There's going to be surveys that have to be filled out and so forth. So it's evolving and it's a work in progress.
And students in the middle school and high school that are hybrid will get lunches? How will they get their lunches if they're not in school?
So that's what'll go out in the communication. It's going to be a pickup twice a week. They'll get, I believe it'll be, and this could be changed, three weeks, three meals at each pickup. It'll cover the amount of meals. So they'll get five meals altogether for the week. They don't have to, they're, let me just say that this is not, it's not everybody free. The only people that are free, the only children that'll be free are the the children that are eligible to be free and reduced. The rest of the student population will be paying for their meals as they normally would, and they'll be paid, paid accounts. So the only, so the hybrid learners, if they decide they want to buy lunch from the, there's going to be something in place for that.
And is there a charge for delivering it to their home?
We're not delivering it.
Oh, they're picking it up?
They are going to be picking it up if they want it. And it'll be picked up at the high school location, it'll be picked up at this campus if it's for elementary, middle, or high school.
Okay.
Because even though all of the elementary is in, we still have remote learners at the elementary.
Okay.
So. Okay, so the website will have information under parent resources and school meals, and there'll be a connect ed going out about that. And that's about all the topics I have to share for tonight. But there's a lot more detail involved in all of these topics, so if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to contact me in the district office. I'm there every day to answer questions.
Thank you, Jill. And then we have superintendent's report.
So I just wanted to quickly cover some of the items that were, some of the minor changes that were made for the district safety plan, which we already approved. But one piece was, we had to add a clause that covered our school resource officers and making sure that their work aligned to our code of conduct, so that was added. We needed to write an assurance that bus drivers and monitors were represented on our district safety team, and that was something we did. This may be hard to believe, but we had to add an infectious disease annex to the end of our plan. I can't imagine what precipitated that need, but that was also added. And then we needed to make or add both our continuity of operations plan for how we'll continue operate schools in the event of a closure, and our continuity of instruction plan. So those documents are both created initially back in March, and we were able to reference those documents to our district safety plan. So that covers the changes that were made to the plan that we already approved through the first agenda item. Another recommendation that's coming up is the COVID-19 workplace student learning environment accommodations. This is a policy that we'll be asking the board to adopt this evening. It just recognizes, that the board recognizes the serious health concerns presented by COVID-19, the need for student and employee accommodations, considerations that shall be made as practical, practicable, practicable, which includes the use of more PPE or modified PPE, and the fact that we have a really interactive process that involves both our school physician and other medical professionals, as well as the Department of Health when we're making those determinations. So I know the whole policy will be read later, but I did want to provide a quick overview of that. Before the board this evening was also a recommendation to make changes to our school calendar. In consultation with both the PVFT and the CSEA, we reached an agreement that it would be prudent to add a third superintendent's conference day prior to the reopening of schools. So September 1st on the school calendar will become an additional superintendent's conference day. That'll be more time available to all staff focused really on three main parts. We're going to focus on preparedness, planning, and professional development, and those will really be the focus of those three days across our buildings. We'll unfortunately not get to have our traditional back-to-school gathering in the high school performing arts center, as that would violate large gathering laws. So there'll be some interactive meetings and a lot of small group work amongst teachers, as well as classroom setup time. So with that day, September 1st becoming superintendent's conference day, the next change will be November 25th, so that's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The recommendation is that becomes a vacation day. And then March 12th, which was originally scheduled to be a superintendent's conference day, will become a regular instructional day. The net change for the school calendar remains the same, so there'll still be 182 instructional days for superintendent's conference days, assuming that those changes are approved later in this meeting. So I want to talk a little bit about probably the item on everyone's mind, which is the student reentry information. So as we've mentioned before, we're still around 85% of our students have expressed that they intend on returning to in-school instruction. So about 15% of our students have opted for the all-remote option. Our technology department has already begun laptop distribution. They've been doing it late at night. I think they actually are finishing up right now, this evening. So they've been trying to get devices out to families that supports the students either in the hybrid model or for those students who opted for remote instruction. And as promised, we have a laptop for every student who needs one from K through 12. We've had teachers, under the guidance of Ms. Mistrada, create some training videos, and our nurses put together some videos, and those were already shared out with our staff and our families. And they cover everything from a wide range of technology programs that can be utilized to support students to COVID-related matters, including hand hygiene, social distancing, and appropriate wearing of PPE. So I know nobody loves getting in front of a camera and creating those videos, and I wanted to thank those individuals for the time and effort they put into creating them, as well as Ms. Mistrada and her team, who collected all of the information and created a resource that can be shared across. Also, for our technology staff, they're planning professional development sessions for our teachers. And for the past or today, and I believe yesterday, they hosted parent technology information sessions, offering both in-person and virtual experiences to really teach parents how to utilize the tools that their students will be bringing home and the programs that the students will be asked to utilize to contribute or engage within the learning, either on their hybrid day or while in remote learning. So I want to thank them for their planning and dedication and the time they've put into making sure that everyone is comfortable regardless of the decisions they made regarding their instructional model for the year. As shared in my last communication, we intend on staggering the start of our school year, so we still intend on having students in school on September 8th, the day after Labor Day. But we'll be decreasing the number of students in each building as we sort of refine and practice some of the new safety protocols that were in place, as well as arrival, dismissal, transition periods, lunch, and other sort of high-traffic times within our schools. So it'll give our youngest students an opportunity to phase or get to know their building, orient themselves within the building, and give us a chance to refine our systems as we start to bring in more students. So that will continue across all four, all three buildings for the four days that week, and then the following week will be back to our 100%, well, back to our hybrid model, as has been communicated. Parents should also be aware that more information will continue to be shared on a more frequent basis as we near the reopening of school. So some of you are probably tired of getting connect ed messages from me and other staff members, but we have a tremendous amount of information that we need to share with our parents. We truly need this to be a partnership between home and school if we're going to be successful in not only opening our schools, but keeping our schools open. So we'll be asking for parents to continue to partner with us, so please be on the lookout for additional information regarding how you can do so. I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community regarding schools opting for the remote option. Now, I'm in daily communication with large numbers of superintendents from many of these same schools. Obviously, we all share, our first priority across all schools is the safety of our students and staff. And a good news on that front is the positivity rate remains below 1% across New York State and our region. That's its seven-day rolling average. Just a few days ago, it had reached an all-time low. So the, from a public health standpoint, the numbers are probably, will never be more favorable than they are now in terms of being able to safely reopen schools. So that's good news. I know some of the districts that are struggling to open or opting to begin remote-only, obviously with the infection rate the way it is, health is not of the greatest concern, but they're struggling to address staffing needs associated with teachers utilizing provisions of FMLA. So I know that we're just trying to get certified and qualified teachers within the classrooms. We've, it's been a struggle. We certainly have our needs as well, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that every classroom has a teacher who's there in front of the students and ready to lead the instruction. So the work of Dr. Doherty and Ms. Mistrada has really brought us to a place where we've been able to cover the leaves we have so far, and will continue to do so as new leaves emerge. But we intend on having teachers in classrooms ready to support students beginning on September 8th. Some of the other reasons that neighboring school districts may be opting to begin remote instruction, ventilation is obviously a high priority. Not all districts have as high-tech of a ventilation system as we have, or we're able to obtain the MERV-13 filters as are recommended by the CDC. So our district is able to do both. We're able to provide more than the required amount of fresh air into all our spaces, and we've already purchased and are installing all of the MERV-13 filters in all of our HVAC systems. Thanks to the work of Dave Spittle and his crew, our buildings are clean, they're disinfected, and our classrooms are being set up to accommodate social distancing. I don't want to downplay the amount of work that entails. Our elementary school, Backfield, has five shipping containers full of furniture that had to be emptied out of classrooms just to make room for student desks. We've transported almost 200 desks from this campus, the high school, middle school campus, to the elementary school, just to provide desks for students to sit at while maintaining social distancing. Many of those desks had to physically be lowered from a high school student height to an elementary school student height. So I know there's a tremendous amount of work that's been done. I know, I thank teachers for their patience, many Many teachers are having to move their classrooms, sometimes in the first time for many years. We're swapping entire grade levels. They're going to different floors. There's a lot of moving of heavy furniture and equipment either out to the storage containers or between classrooms. And teachers are being patient because they want to get inside their classrooms, or custodians are working as hard as they possibly can to accommodate the great deal of movement and need that's there. But we, again, we intend on being ready, all those classrooms, to reopen to students on the 8th. And then the last piece that some districts are struggling with is the procurement of personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies. That's something that we really began as early as March to purchase more of those materials, to make sure we had materials on-site when schools were ready to reopen. At the time, we were hopeful it would be in the spring, that obviously didn't happen. But now we are even better prepared to reopen schools in September. So I just wanted to share some of the reasons why neighboring districts may be opting for remote learning and how Putna Valley is positioned to handle those same issues. It was extremely nice to see some students on campus. This week, we had our kindergarten orientation and bus run. We split up the large group into three smaller groups, so there was three separate runs. We did the parent orientation piece in the outdoor classroom. So Dr. Podesta and Mr. Chikory welcomed the parents. It was wonderful to see the students. I got to say, it was the most seamless I've ever seen kindergarten orientation and bus run go. I did not see a single child cry. I did see some parents cry, but that's normal. But the students were handled in stride, masks on, on the bus, off the bus, into their classrooms, meeting their teachers. Truly brought a smile to many people's faces, having teachers and students back into school. And I'm looking forward to our buildings filling up with more smiling faces of students, even if you can't see them smile. So the other topic I wanted to cover was the Capitol Project, a quick update. So obviously, majority of the work continues to happen within the middle school. Floors and ceilings are currently being installed. Fixtures are being mounted. Kitchen equipment is being assembled and connected. Furniture is on-site and ready to deploy. Painting of finished spaces is underway, so those are some of the things that are happening right now. Some of the needs over the next week, there'll be some concrete and paving work in front of the middle school that'll begin actually tomorrow. Some of the finishing materials still have to be mounted on the walls. The canopy in front of the middle school, the steel pillars are there, but the canopy itself has not yet arrived. That was a backordered item, so the panels themselves are not there. Accent and other special-order lighting, some of those we're waiting for. Temporary countertop for the middle school kitchen. Case work at the elementary school, and for anyone who's been in there lately, a tremendous amount of cleaning needs to be done. So Mr. Spittle and myself are there on a more-than-daily basis. We're there throughout the day, working closely with our construction manager, general contractor, and the other trades to make sure that that space will in fact be ready to receive students on the 8th. Will it be perfect? Certainly not. There'll be much work that'll continue after hours. The construction crews will continue to be on-site, working shifts from, I believe, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. But the work will continue, but the space will be open and safe for students, and that's ultimately what we want to have. And that same holds true for the elementary school. Our health and wellness center remains on schedule. That's scheduled to be done at the end of December. And this, we had the delivery of the roof panels, and those will begin to get installed, I believe, tomorrow. So that's my update. Thank you.
Dr. Love, there's two questions from the public on the reentry. Shall I read them now?
Yes.
First up, a parent is asking why masks are not required to be worn in class and why health screenings are not mandatory in tract. Looks like screening is random and on a trust system for parents. Could there be a better tracking system?
Okay. So the first question is masks are 100% required to be worn in class. We are requiring students to be socially distanced and to wear masks. The recommendation is socially distanced and masks. The requirement is socially distanced or masks. But obviously, we want to optimize how safe not only our students, but our staff is. So our intention is that masks will be worn at all times unless students are eating or they are receiving a mask break, where the teachers will optimize the amount of space between students and provide them the opportunity to take their mask off. And we'll be using large gathering spaces and outdoor spaces throughout all three buildings to facilitate those mask breaks. So that was the first part of the question. Masks are definitely required to be worn by students while in school. The second part of it was, give me hints again?
Screening.
Screenings. So, yeah, so we're asking every family to conduct a home health screening before the child arrives at school. That's actually the recommendation from the guidance that we received. They recommend that it be completed at home. For us to complete that at school, it would take us hours to get every kid into school every morning just to complete the health screening survey. So the plan that we have in place is twofold. One, we'll be conducting our own temperature screenings throughout the school day, and that has a couple advantages. One, we're not just screening for the student's temperature when they get off the bus. If a student had recently taken Tylenol, they may not present a temperature when they get off the bus and then be in school. So the fact that we're going to be conducting temperature screenings throughout the school day would discourage anyone from doing that, because the child may then display a fever later on in the school day. So the random screenings is one thing. And we'll also be randomly screening parents to make sure that they are in fact completing the health screening at home, and that's also a requirement of the guidance. So where our staff are required to do it on a daily basis, and we track it, there's, for 1,500-plus students, to track it on a daily basis would be logistical impossibility for us. So we'll be randomly checking, maybe grade level at a time, a class at a time, to contact those parents and ensure that they are in fact completing the survey. They'll be able to complete it online. We'll be able to see who completed every day, and we'll be contacting the individuals who are not completing it. So I think Dr. Doherty wants to add something else.
Sure. So with the help of Mr. Mahoney here, I was able, we were able to create what's called a dashboard for our students and our employees, so we can watch the dashboard as people complete screenings. And it's coded and color-coded, so green is that they've done it, red is that they have not. So we're able to really give a nice scan and contact parents and remind them to complete the forms. So we are absolutely requiring people to screen their children every day, and we will be checking it pretty, very consistently. Thank you.
So the screening is an actual, it's similar to what the staff are filling out?
Yes.
Every day that's supposed to fill? It's not just parents take your temperature and let send them if they're okay?
Correct. It's answering those questions, and I have, what, all the administrators in every building and the nurses have what's called a dashboard, so we can see who's completing it and who's not. Yes. We can monitor it regularly.
And communications are going back, going out to parents if they've not already. That's part of it, and it's, because I think at one point, it seemed like it was just going to be, you had to take a temperature of your student, but it's going to be more formal than that.
Yes.
Yeah, so we've mentioned on several occasions that parents will be asked to complete the home health screening. Now we have a separate communication going out that's specific to the home health screening, and will provide greater detail regarding what the expectations are.
I would recommend that any communication that goes out to the parents confirms, states about the home health screening, just, we have to get it out there as many times as possible. And in addition, are we giving any, I mean, I know there's CVS or whatever, but are we giving resources if a parent does not have a thermometer? Are we, anything we're doing to confirm that?
We certainly can. One of the things that we are doing to, it's a daily reminder, is every morning, every parent who signs up will, just like you get a connect ed through an email, you'll get an email reminder that you have to complete that screen. We're also working on, and I'm not 100% sure about this, but we're trying to create QR codes so that parents could just stick it on their refrigerator, scan it, and then complete the form, and it'll pull it right up for you. So, you know, again, right now, it's going to go out in a daily email where every parent will receive that. You could just click on it and complete the form. And if you have multiple children, you can do one form. You can just add multiple children on that form.
Thank you. Was there another question?
Did you answer the question in your report about 100% remote learners reentering school in January if they choose to?
Okay. So yes, the request from the district is for any family who's opting for the remote learning option, make that commitment for the first semester, which brings us into January, at which point, we would certainly come up with a mechanism for those families who wish to send their child back in for in-person instruction, be provided a pathway to do
Jeremy, can you talk to BOSI's transportation, what's occurring there?
Sure. So for BOSI students, we intend on transporting our BOSI students who are physically in school on those days to the BOSI's program. BOSI's, because they serve many different school districts with many different schedules, they can't commit to an A-day, B-day rotation for each of their students because it doesn't coincide with when districts are in and out. So BOSI's has made a statement that says that they'll take the children any days in which they can be transported there. So specifically, student drivers, they reference. So if you're a senior and you have a driver's license, you may go to, drive yourself to the BOSI's program five days a week. But they are offering virtual options for students who are not able to get there five days a week. Unfortunately, the district does not have the capability to transport students who are at home in the morning, completing their classes virtually, to pick them up and get them to BOSI's. There would actually be overlap. We would be picking them up while their classes were still occurring virtually in order to be able to sort of do a loop all the way around town. We have this many restrictions for transportation. We have limits in the number of students we could have on a bus, and we obviously have limits in the number of drivers and buses we have available. So we spoke about it. I would love to be able to pick up every kid at their doorstep with multiple buses at exactly the time they need to leave to get to BOSI's before their program starts, but it's an impossibility for us to do so. We can't bring more students into the high school, and we can't provide transportation sort of door-to-door transportation for those families to get to BOSI's every day without there being overlap. They would be missing part of their required instructional classes in order to get on a bus in enough time to pick up all the other kids who need to get on the bus to get to BOSI's before their program begins in the afternoon. And those are some of the hurdles that we faced when trying to figure out other means of transportation for BOSI's students. I believe, I mean, that is certainly in the region, the norm. I don't know of any district that is providing individual transportation from students' homes to BOSI's, that the districts in the area are all providing transportation on the days in which the students are physically in their buildings. So we're following the standard of all the other districts in the region. Any other questions from the board? Dan? Good?
Right, because this would be our public comment on agenda items, but we have no public. So essentially, we can move on to new business. And, number one.
Okay. Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the 2020-21 district-wide safety and emergency management plan as per document number 48-21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt a revised 2020-21 school district calendar as per document number 37/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
And that'll be on the website right away, right?
It's already on the website.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Barbara Moveney, a school monitor from the district effective August 18, 2020, as per document 38/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Marilyn DiNisco, a school monitor from the district effective June 30, 2020, as per document number 44-21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Marilyn was one of my school monitors. She's a great lady. We're going to miss her, so, but I wish her well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Danielle Lopez, a campus monitor at the middle school from the district effective August 15, 2020, as per document number 46/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And number six.
Whereas Brad Grogan has been previously tenured as a teacher in the special education tenure area in the Putna Valley Central School District, and continues to devote a substantial portion of his time instructing special education tenure area, and now therefore be resolved upon recommendation of superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Brad Grogan to a three-year probationary term as a social studies teacher commencing on September 1, 2020, and terminating on August 31, 2023, in the tenure area of social studies. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said teacher must have at least three years of effective or highly effective overall APPR ratings pursuant to section 312- D of the educational law during the probationary term, and may not receive an effective overall APPR rating in the final year probation. Mr. Grogan holds professional certification in students with disabilities, social studies 7 through 12, and social studies 7 through 12.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Grogan's already tenured in special education, but this year, he'll be taking on, half of his schedule will be gen ed classes in social studies, in which he's also certified. So he'll continue to accrue seniority on the special ed side and begin to accrue seniority towards tenure on the gen ed side for social studies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Nicole DiAdono to the following position, effective September 1, 2020, to be paid at the Step Two MA rate of the PVFT salary schedule. Point six, social studies position at the high school through June 30, 2020. Point four, leave replacement special education teacher at the high school through on or about December 31, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Kimberly Gonzalez as a long-term substitute teacher in grade six at the middle school, effective September 1, 2020, through on or about December 1, 2020, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the rate of $125 per day. Ms. Gonzalez holds certification in childhood education 1 through 6.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Michelle Moran to a probationary appointment pending fingerprint clearance as a school monitor effective September 8, 2020, with a 52-week probationary period, September 8, 2021, at the middle school on Step One of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a first reading of policy number 4822 COVID-19 workplace and student learning environment accommodations as per document number 40-21, and waive the requirement of a second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This policy will state that the district will ensure that all our students and all our staff members who have special needs, medical illnesses, et cetera, will be, have proper care during this crisis, and will be accommodated in this environment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11.
He had resolved that the Board of Education of the Putna Valley Central School District hereby adopts the retention and disposition schedule for New York Local Government Records, Schedule LGS-01, issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records for use by all officers in officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. And be it further resolved that in accordance with Article 57A, A, only those records described in Schedule LGS-01 will be disposed of after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein, and B, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Basically, what this is saying is, oh, you gonna say that?
Beat me to it, go for it.
I'm sorry. There, there are laws that say how long we have to keep things, and it's about a 300-page document. To give you a rough idea, is, like, if a student belongs to a club, we don't have to keep that document at all, once the, the semester's over. If we, if they take any kind of test, we keep those documents for about a year. If they have special education needs or any kind of records that pertain to special education, we have to keep that a lifetime. The student's overall grades and averages GPA, we have to keep that a lifetime. So, it goes through every little thing that we do for our students, and tells how long we have to keep them, and it goes through any detail. It's all yours now, sir.
You are much more detailed than I was going to be, so that was good. I, I was just going to mention that this is something that has always been in place. We've always had a document retention schedule, it just hasn't been updated in quite a number of years. So, this is just an update to a procedure that's been in place for a long time, so it's not something new.
Now, are these just paper records destroyed? These are not?
It covers electronic records, too.
That always makes me nervous, because the state comes back and says, well, you know, like, I want to know what insurance provider you had 15 years ago, and like, where are those records? We just threw all those records out. I just, I just worry with at least some kind of, not whether a student necessarily was in a club, but I don't.
There's specific timeframes for different things, so like, insurance records and financial records, if you're running out those outside of the student, yeah, there's required numbers of years to keep certain.
Ms. Figarella, will you please approach the microphone? The people at home cannot hear you. Thank you.
Anything you say is important, Jill.
I gotta start all over again.
So, record retention, it could be for anything that we do in the district. And so, financial records and things like that, there's a specified amount of years to keep certain things, accounts payable records, there's like six or seven years, I forget, but it's, then we can toss them out. So, if the state comes back and wants something that's further back than that, it isn't, we, we don't have to have it. Like, payroll records have to be kept for 55 years.
I have no faith.
Right. So, it's, it's, it's all specified in that document, how long we have to keep each thing. I mean, or we're going to have to start building buildings to put things in.
No, I can see paper records. I just wor, you know, electronic records, I always think.
We have to keep everything that's in that book.
If they're not taking up any space, they're in the cloud somewhere.
In that book, we're required to do whatever it says.
It's great reading if you want to go to sleep. The 300 pages are really boring and...
I'm going to the policy manual to do that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda, items 2 through 11, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
We're approving CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving 2021 substitute lists, we're approving enhanced longevity graduate course credits and in-service credits for staff members. We're approving the use of the district facility by Putnam County Emergency Management Services. In case there's emergency, we will let the, the district be used by the county if they need to. We're approving a one-year extension of our food contract with Aramark. We're approving staff members to serve as substitutes as needed. We're approving additional work hours for three employees for the work they did during the summer. We're approving budget transfers, which was mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, and we're reclassifying some of the items of what is happening. I won't go through those details. We're approving unpaid leave of absence for a staff member who's completing their education, and we're mandating the appointment of the middle school assistant principal, Dr. Payne, to start on now September 1st.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
We did second it, right?
He seconded.
I think it, I'm sorry.
He seconded twice.
I read it.
Public comment on any topic, Maureen, we have anything else from the community?
I just want to make one quick comment. For those who aren't aware, tomorrow at 11 o'clock at Seton, they'll be having a special memorial honoring service for Frank Reilly. And for those who don't, Frank was a, a real educator in our district. Besides being a math teacher, he formed a group called Peers Influences, Peers Partnership, with people in the community and with students. And this was an organization where students assisted other students making quote-unquote "correct" decisions. So, the students put together activities and actions that would help advise this, other students with regard to health and other issues. And the site, if you're interested, is not Peers Influence, Peers Partnership, it's just peerspartnership.org. So, if you go to their site to see information, but it's 11 o'clock at Seton Church tomorrow, and all they ask is, please let them know, so they can plan appropriately how they're going to have to space these few people who do come to Frank's thing. But that will be tomorrow at the assistant at Seton Church in St. Lebo.
Thank you for that. Maureen, anything else from the community?
No, they just thanked you. They would ask if it's at all possible if rapid testing sites could be provided, a list maybe from the district, if they need to go have a test, where they could go.
So, yeah, the district is committed to work with the Health Department to identify testing locations. I don't know of any within the rapid testing within our community now, but it's certainly a conversation we have on our weekly conver, on our weekly phone call with the Health Department. So, if I find out any sites that are actually offering that rapid, rapid testing, we would be happy to share that.
I don't know how rapid, rapid is, but the one by the rugged boot.
Yeah, that's a rapid test.
In your, in your car, and that you get it back in about 40 minutes.
Yeah, I think there's two things, there's the antigen test, and then there's the P.C. Shana Siegel will be so mad at me right now, PCR, or whatever it is, the, the more sort of in-depth test, and that's the one that's very time-consuming. I believe what they're referencing is, there was, there's a new test that was developed in partnership with Yale University and the MBA, and that's a saliva test. So, that test is actually much more cost-effective. It doesn't require the antigen, which seems to be the holdup in the regular testing program. And that saliva test, I think, is within 15 minutes or so. So, that, I think there's a lot of optimism, the FTC sort of rapidly approved it to be administered. So, I think there's a lot of optimism that that test may provide folks with more immediate feedback and be more widely available and more cost-effective. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that that's something that, obviously, our local health organizations would get access to at first, but it does offer some long-term possibilities of being available to school districts or other municipalities to be able to perform their own tests, so.
The only problem with that test is it has a fairly high false negative rate. It doesn't identify you if you're positive, but if you're false negative, you got to still monitor and everything else.
I just want, this is our last board meeting before we actually open our schools, and we'll have one the Thursday after we open. So, I want to take this opportunity to thank all the administrators, all the teachers, the custodial staff, everybody who has been trying to get us ready, to be ready for a school year that we've never could imagine and hopefully never had to see again. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty confident that the team has really done a great job in getting us ready for what nobody could have been ready for, and I want to thank the entire team for that. And hopefully, everybody will have a safe and uneventful start to, to our school year, and that everything gets better from here. Anything else from the board? With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Enjoy the rest of the August.